Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission for September 27th. That's the first time I've ever used that gavel, it's really loud. If you have a cellphone with you, now would be a really good time to turn it off. That's what I'm gonna do. And if you have an item that you wish to speak on, there are out on the table in the hallway these little forms, if you'll fill one out for us and bring it up to our clerk, that would be really helpful for us, just to keep things sorted. For those of you who are with us perhaps for the first time today, the way this works is, we'll do a little bit of housekeeping here at the beginning, and then we'll go through each item, we'll call it in turn, let the applicant come forward, give us their name and address, explain to us what it is they're asking for. We may or may not have questions of them. If there's anyone here to speak, either in support or opposition, we'll ask them to come forward, give us their name and address, we may or may not have questions of them. We may or may not discuss it amongst ourselves, and then we'll call for a vote on each item in turn. First item on the agenda today is to receive the minutes from the September 13th Planning Commission.
Motion for second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to receive the minutes of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission for September 13th. Would you cast your votes, please? They are received. That can't be quite right.
I got it.
Okay, thank you. They are received. Okay, that's not gonna work. We have a handful of uncontested continuance requests.
Yes, we received three requests for uncontested continuance on your agenda, item B-12 for case PUD 1693 to defer to October 11th. Item B-13 on your agenda for case PC-10533, also defer to October 11th. And item B-14 on your agenda for case PUD 1686, defer to October 25th.
Is there anybody here today that thought that they wanted to be heard on any of those items? If not, I'll take a motion.
I make a motion to approve those items on the consent docket.
Second.
No, we're doing uncontested continuance.
I'm sorry, on the continuing docket.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue items 12, 13, and 14. Would you cast your votes, please? They are continued.
We also received...
Mr. La Forge, are you voting with us?
There you go.
Thank you. Those items are continued.
And we have one new request for continuance for item B-9 on the agenda, for PUD 1694 to defer to October 11th. And did you say item 10 as well? Are we gonna hear it?
I'm sorry, I was looking to see what the item number was. Yes, item 10 as well.
Okay, and item 10 is gonna go to October 11th as well? Okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone present who wanted to be heard on either of those items today?
Is it B-10?
Yes.
I was wanting to...
Where, would you come forward, please? Are you Ms. Harris?
Yes, I am.
Do we have a letter of protest from you?
Yes.
We are gonna continue this item for two weeks. Is that all right with you?
Sure.
And in the meantime, we're gonna sit down with the applicant, and we will be in contact with you, so you can join in those discussions.
Okay, so I should come back in two weeks?
You should plan to do that, unless you hear otherwise from us.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So I have two items to continue, 9 and 10.
I'll make a motion to continue items 9 and 10 to the October 11, 2018 meeting.
I will second.
I have a motion to continue items 9 and 10. Would you cast your votes, please? Those two items are continued. We have a number of items today on the consent docket. These are items that are generally routine enough, and that have not drawn any protest, that we think that they can be approved in a bunch. Would you read those for us?
Sure. For the record, I'm gonna read in the consent items. Item 1 is CE, it's a closing 280 feet of an alley between Northwest 5th and Northwest 6th Street and Ward 6. Item 2 is ED 224, which is an easement dedication for the south half of Northeast 82nd Street, between Wilshire and Broadway. Item 3 is a final plat of Valencia Commercial, Section 3. Item 4 is the final plat of Saratoga. Item 5 is the final plat of Chisholm Creek Farms, Phase 3. And item 6 is the final plat of Northwood Village, Section 2 revised.
Is there anyone present who thought that they wanted to be heard on any of those items today? If not, I'll take a motion.
Motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve items 1 through 6. Would you cast your votes, please? They are approved.
The next section of the agenda is items requiring separate vote. Item 7 is case C-6929, sorry, 7029, preliminary plat of CROG development.
Good afternoon, Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates here on behalf of the applicant. This property's been zoned a long time in a PUD, two PUDs. It's been waiting to develop, and with the growth of Paycom and other developments going up in the area, the developer decided he was ready to move forward. This is a planned commercial office park. The PUD allows for various uses, and the anticipation is that as we develop this into these large blocks and lots, that they would develop into corporate office, or large entertainment users, as well as the smaller retail restaurants closer to Memorial and Rockwell. With regard to the staff comments, we agree with the TEs 1 through 3, but on TE number 4, staff is asking for limits to no access on Block 1 along Memorial and Rockwell, and we can't agree to that. The current PUD allows driveways to start at 150 feet from the center line of Rockwell and Memorial, and then a 200-foot spacing from there out, which is standard, the standard recommendation of traffic. The property to the east of us, the colored picture here, is also a master-planned PUD that allowed driveways as close as 200 feet, and this was all incorporated into a traffic study that we did back when we amended that PUD. And so, similar to that, the plat here has the same similar language with regard to access. So my client really does not want to give that right up. You can see we've got the small lots there, that would be conducive to either entrance from the back, or entrance from the front, or drive-through. And that's the intent.
Are your drives gonna match those across the street?
We'll have to meet the criteria, so if those, depends on who's first. They would line up, right?
Right. Second guy has to match the first guy.
That's correct.
All right. I wouldn't mind hearing from Traffic on their thoughts.
Richard McCoven, Traffic Management. Our concern was that you have 800 feet from the existing signal, that's at 139th Street down to Memorial. We didn't need a lot of driveways between 139th and Memorial. And we didn't want driveways in 4, 5, and 6, because of the area going from Rockwell to the on-ramp. You've got an internal roadway shown, everybody has access to the internal roadway, don't need to put driveways out there. Per the comprehensive plan, we're trying to strive for more access management. You want to access the lower classified road. Mr. Johnson's firm just designed a access road for Paycom, which will be coming out on Rockwell, north of the apartment complex there. It's expecting 2,000 vehicles in the peak hour, according to their traffic study they provided with that. We really don't need any additional driveways in that area.
That sounds like a compelling argument, and I think, you know, this type of rezone or effort is our chance to try to make things right with comp plan, so...
But it's not a rezoning. We're permitted by right today to file an application to put the drives in, as we, as the plat allows, 200-foot spacing, 150 foot from the intersection. I mean, it's permitted in the current PUD. We don't want the plating process to take that right away. And I know the Planning Commission doesn't think necessarily like the realtor, the broker, but if I could get a drive on Rockwell across the street, where am I gonna put my business?
Oh, thanks. You're saying these driveways were negotiated during the PUD...
Correct.
...phase? And so, but at this juncture, yes, help me understand at this juncture how we could amend the right to have that? Is it simply because as you've separated these lots out, is that what creates the need for it?
Right. So staff has requested a, requested us to put limits to no access.
So without the plat, if you just wanted to develop that section, you could come in and just cut driveways every 150 feet?
Yep, or 200 feet.
Every 200 feet, excuse me.
Yes, and so, I mean, if that's the way the Commission wants to go, we'll take a continuance, and we'll take Block 1 out of the plat, because we just can't give that right up.
What's the bigger concern, Tim? Is it, I'm looking at the plat, the way you've laid it out, is it lots 1 through 4, or is it lots 4 through 6?
It's both. And, you know, Richard brings up a good point. We'll have to work with the city and OTA with regard to access at, let's say, Block 4, because they don't want them cutting across two lanes of traffic, across the gore point to get on the on-ramp.
Yeah, yeah. We just dealt with the same thing, I believe, on the opposite corner, Rockwell and Memorial, for another issue that was, they were wanting to cut in a drive, as I recall, which was gonna be close to the on-ramp. So we just had this discussion. He brings up another good point, though, that I didn't really notice. 139th is where the signalized intersection is now, and so we may have driveways that are interfering with that, that traffic light coming out. How will that work if there's eventually two traffic lights there? Are those, are they sort of joined lights, so traffic flows through and stops simultaneously, or no?
Are you, you mean at Memorial and at 139th?
Well, that one, and then also, my understanding is that at some point in the future, where Paycom is bringing their road out, at some point, there may be another signalized intersection there, so now we got three...
There's a group signal at that location, at 100, what's gonna be called 143rd Street, and the system will have to be coordinated. And that's the way it's designed?
Okay.
And it's under construction. You know, the city, when the plat came in to, on Deer Crest to the east, they allowed 138th Street as a public street, and there was no restriction on the driveways, limits to no access on that plat, which was done a couple years ago for Walmart's development. So that's in place, that plat's recorded.
Actually, I believe 138th Street was made a right out only.
Okay.
Yeah, I struggle with this one. I think, you know, we've just had so many items in here over the last year that seem to be, seem to pivot around the traffic around this area. And I feel like anything that might make it a little bit worse, that's outside of, you know, our long-term plan for the city, is tough for me to support. That's just me.
To kind of give you a background, Richard touched on it. Paycom is under construction, putting 143rd Street in, from their northeast corner, quarter mile, a half a mile to Rockwell. It will have a signal. It's designed as a three-lane street, so that traffic could be, you know, two lanes in, two lanes out, depending on how their flows are. And the purpose of that drive is to get traffic north, because Paycom's problem now is, they only exit south, and they only can go west. So it's to get traffic to go north, out of their addition, and we've estimated about half of our traffic will be going north on Rockwell, and half would come south and get on the turnpike. Another item that we're working with, with Paycom and with this developer, is to have a connected point, midpoint on Paycom's property, that has not been resolved, so I can't commit to that. But the goal would be to allow for exit from Paycom's parking lot into this retail addition, for obvious reasons. You know, you got an automatic customer base that could use the retail services, so that's in negotiations. I feel positive that they're going to do that, but I cannot commit to that. So there are things coming and being done to benefit the traffic in this area, which is, over the years, has grown harder and harder due to Paycom's growth. But this particular developer doesn't feel like he can be penalized from what he bought the land, his own the way it is.
Yeah, I mean, this is the last thing I wanna say about it. I just feel like, to some extent, this thing came through, the discussion was had, it was negotiated, the drives were agreed to, now we're going through, we're actually engaging the master planning of what's gonna lay out here, and now we're gonna try and take it away. It's a hard thing for me to get behind, but I understand the concern. I will say that this, the way this is laid out, contemplates, looks like a larger central roadway, that connects Memorial back to the signalized intersection at Rockwell, which I applaud you for, because as somebody who drives Memorial Corridor twice a day, the biggest problem is that in that area, there's not enough of those centralized roads, and enough ins and outs, you have to backtrack, or U-turn, or go way down, or go a mile, it just depends on what it looks like, and it's, that contributes to the traffic problem. So...
This will be a proposed divided boulevard drive, designed to carry a lot of traffic.
I have sort of mixed feelings about this. I'm not particularly persuaded by the argument that it was negotiated in the PUD stages, because it was so long ago, things have changed. I am, as you know, not loathe to hold people to new standards, where I feel like there's a point to that. What I'm sort of more persuaded by is the fact that this area is being sort of master-planned, that that's been taken into account, and that that's part of how it's laid out. I don't have a problem with this as it is, as much as I like to defer to staff on this particular issue, and I feel like if it's been designed in a way that makes sense, not only for this property, but for the adjacent properties, I'm okay with it, so...
Well, I mean, if our goal is to prohibit, I mean, I'm just guessing, traffic from Lot 4 down there in the corner 5 and 6, from attempting to jump and get out into the on-ramp, isn't there a traffic way to prevent that?
Yeah.
I mean, to where that they can't?
And there's, and that'll be addressed when we come in for building permit. Traffic will have the opportunity again to say, hey, you can't put that there, it's too close to the gore point, we need to offset, but there's room to still have a drive, and not cause a traffic issue with cutting across too many lanes of traffic. So we want that flexibility, we'll, you know, obviously, we still intend to meet OTA's requirements.
So would each of these lots effectively, I don't, I can't tell from what their size is, was each, would 4, 5, and 6 each have a drive?
They could.
So that'd be 3 between here and the master street? Is that right? I mean, so we got 1, 2, 3, between the corner of 4, and down to where the lot, the main road comes in, there would be potentially 3 drives plus the road?
Correct.
That's a lot of drives. I mean, what's that distance, Tim? I don't, if you could help me out there?
It's a little over 600 feet, from the signal at 139th, and the signal at Memorial, front of the road. It's approximately 600 feet. Would you agree, Richard?
139th to Memorial is 700 feet, and from Rockwell to that other drive's probably about the same 700 feet.
So it's 700 feet, from the southeast corner of 4 to the drive between 6 and 3?
Yes, sir.
At 700 feet?
That's about it, yeah. And then we'd still have to have the spacing of 200 feet apart, so what you're gonna end up seeing is probably more or less shared drives. You might have one drive at the lot line between 1 and 2, and one drive at the lot line between 2 and 3, that would be allowed to be shared. This, the concept here is very similar to Utica Square in Tulsa. That's the concept they want to develop here.
I love Utica Square, but I just don't know that...
I like Utica Square.
...these drives make sense. I don't know. I love drives. It's hard for me to envision how this is a good solution. I mean, with that, some commitment, because I can see 4 being the largest lot, and being right there on the corner, that resembles an On-Q location to me. I'm just, it makes sense for a user such as that. I don't know that On-Q has any interest in it. 711, quick trip, pick one of those giant gas stations, that would be a logical location for that, and that, those generate a lot of in-and-out traffic.
Addition?
Along with 3 and 6, I mean, if you look at 5 and 6 there, it's not necessarily 4. If 4's shared with 5 and 6, it'd be where you only had 1, and you were cutting it down to them, that, to me, would be...
The other thing, as I, as I just think through it, again, a drive that's every single day, is if you're coming out of one of those drives, you're gonna have the stoplight, the back of the stoplight is what you're gonna be looking at, and that's a 50 mile-an-hour road, and most cars are going faster than that. So you're gonna have people coming, coming across that corridor, and the people that are looking back to the left, they don't necessarily know what traffic signal is on, so they can't, it's not like they're looking back at a four-way stop. Does that make sense? They're looking at the backside of the stoplight, that's all they can see, 'cause it's a one-way street. So, and if you've got an access drive at 4, I see your point.
But no difference here than, let's say, May Avenue. At May Avenue, Memorial, there's a big Conoco station there, it's the same driveway spacings.
Not a great example.
But driving that lot, it's, I mean, it's, I don't see it as a hindrance, it's one-way, Memorial Road's one-way. And May Avenue's a heavier-traveled street than Rockwell. Rockwell doesn't have the same kind of traffic count, at least at this point.
Yeah, yeah.
But given the nature of the development out here right now, this is probably one of the, this is a, there's a lot of development coming out in this area, I can, I see it, as Scott can attest to it. A lot of development coming, a lot of new rooftops going in, there's a big apartment complex up there, this, most of the stuff is already zoned for development of somehow, of some sort, so I don't, I don't think, I think it's...
Here's where I'm torn, though. I mean, I don't know what your, what your client's willing to do here, and for us to disallow it, and then he's gonna go back and alter the plat and come back. I mean, the truth is, he could go pull a permit and cut these drives in right now.
I agree.
Go cut them in right now, and then come back, and what are we gonna do about it? So I don't know if there's a compromise that everybody can get comfortable with, staff from Traffic, and these issues with shared drives, if there's some sort of a compromise there, but I don't see that we have a lot of options outside of trying to get them to agree, which I do think, that little corner with those lots, I understand the concern now that we talk about it, I do.
Yeah.
I do.
And, you know, just like we do on every other commercial application for building permit, we've worked, we have to work with the staff.
And real quickly, I think the May Memorial example was a good one. I live and work within a mile there, and see it every day, so it works fine. There may be technically some issues, but it works fine practically. I'm there every day.
We just think that the, I don't think the plat's the tool to use to take away the rights that have been granted by the zoning, which is the law.
You have my support there. I agree. I can't get comfortable with that either. I don't care whether it's been a year, 15 years, it doesn't make any difference. You look at all that stuff, so I understand what you're saying there, and I also understand that you can amend it and go do it. I'm just wondering if there isn't a compromise somewhere to at least require some shared drives or something to appease it. If you say no, that's fine, but I'm just curious.
Well, I mean, I'll agree to a two-week continuance. I'll work with the staff, and if they're willing to talk, work it out, I'm willing to talk, and we could put some restrictions on maybe the access points that affect that block, and if they can't, then I'm sure my client's gonna tell me to take that block out.
All right.
Fair enough.
That's fair?
That's fair.
Thank you for the consideration. Okay, I'll move to a two-week continuance to item number 7.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue item number 7. Cast your votes, please. It's continued.
Okay, item number 8 is SPUD 1077 to rezone 1233 Northeast 6th Street from R2 to SPUD 1077.
Good afternoon, my name's Scott Sidwell.
I'm sorry, would you give us your name and address for the record?
Scott Sidwell. I don't hear well, I'm still...
Would you give us your name and address for the record?
Scott Sidwell, 743 Northwest 99th Street.
We were talking about this application in our little pre-meeting. I'm, I'm very supportive of the idea of redevelopment at this location, and generally what I see here. I tried to call you before the meeting today to see if you would be willing to take a couple of weeks to sit down and go through these details. Do you own this property outright?
Yes, ma'am, and we'd be happy to postpone. I mean, there's no emergency.
Oh, well, let's do that, then. I'd really like to sit down and kind of talk through the details on this application.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to continue item number 8. Would you cast your votes, please? I will call you.
Item 9 was continued. Item 10 is PC-10547 to rezone 2805 East Britton Road from R1 to O2.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, on behalf of the applicant. Also with me are the applicants, as well as Rand Elliott, who is the architect...
I'm sorry, are we, are we up to 11?
Yes, all right.
10 was continued, I'm sorry. Are you on 11, David?
Sorry.
Yeah, sorry, we did continue 10, so I read the wrong case 10.
I'm gonna step out.
This is number 11.
I wasn't even listening, I just stood up your mic.
Yep, you just knew. Number 11 is SPUD 1076, and it's to rezone 715 Northwest 64th Street from O2 to SPUD 1076.
Hang on, the B team's getting up.
JV, chair.
So again, for the record, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. With me are the applicants, as well as Rand Elliott, who is the architect and designer of this project, and Tim Johnson, who's a civil engineer, as well as Mark Sitzau, who's a planner in his office. This is a PUD, excuse me, an SPUD that would allow for the development of a personal storage facility. In a moment, I'm gonna have Mr. Elliott get up here and describe his vision for this, and help you understand why this is different from the traditional personal storage, and how our clients have sought to try to find a way to make a unique and different personal storage than the traditional experience that we have at a personal storage. This, this general area should look fairly familiar. I came and rezoned this area back last December, is when it got approved by City Council. It was a much larger area than we are doing now, but the PUD that is in place, and that is PUD 1653, covers the subject site, it goes south of the subject site, north of the subject site, and a few other random lots sprinkled throughout here. So at the beginning, I would note that the only thing that has changed from what you recommended for approval, and the City Council ultimately did approve in PUD 1653, is the addition of the personal storage use, and the other uses necessary for that, specifically the retail sales and services general. But you would note, under that use unit, it has been limited to, and I'll read it, however, to be limited to the sales of items that are relative to the personal storage uses, such as boxes, tapes, shelving, and other items associated with this use. So all we've done is added the ability to be able to develop personal storage. I say all, the other thing we have done is we've added more specificity as it relates to restrictions. When we filed this, we did receive word of a protest, there's two of them. One, a group of individuals that own the land south of us, that you can see here, is grass, and then the individual that owns this treed area to our north and to our west. So in an effort to appease these individuals, what we have done is added more requirements as it relates to landscaping. So specifically, along what would be the 64th Street right-of-way, we have a 15-foot building limit line, and within that 15 feet, we have a 10-foot landscape buffer. We then added specific requirements as to the separation of trees and the caliper of tree required. tree required in an effort to try to screen the individual here. Additionally, when we first filed this application, the proposed use of personal storage was actually south of the 64th Street right-of-way. So we had what we were calling the finger that came down here, and we had some signage on that that would have been visible from 63rd Street. In an effort to appease our neighbors here to the west, we have removed that. So our application now is north of the 64th Street right-of-way as it relates to the items south of us. So this has been continued two separate times. I do believe you're going to hear a request from Mr. Work to continue this again, but it is worth noting that this hearing was continued two separate times. There have been multiple meetings with my clients, the protesters, Mr. Work, Mr. Johnson, multiple emails and phone calls back and forth to try to come to a resolution. It was asked again last night that we continue it. I don't see a need to continue it. To me, we're down to one issue that I can see. I think we've responded to any specific request that Mr. Work's client has. What we're down to now is a request that my client somehow participate or be forced to extend 64th Street. So the 64th Street right-of-way exists. If you look at this exhibit, you'll see the number 2 right here. What that represents is this corresponding picture here. So somebody's standing right here at the end of where the pavement stops for 64th Street right-of-way. This is looking straight east down that right-of-way. What you can see is it's full of fairly large trees. It's my belief that the 64th Street right-of-way has never been opened and never paved, and it's just in its natural vegetative state. So extending 64th Street does nothing to serve my client's property, the property that's south and west of us. It would only serve and benefit the folks that are here in protest. It is worth noting that those folks have frontage on 63rd Street. I would submit that the frontage they have on 63rd Street would be superior to that of the 64th Street right-of-way. 64th Street is paved. This is the image that number 1 is taken from the corner of Chartel and 64th. So it is paved and improved to a point, and it is paved and improved to a point greater than what we would need to access the site. I believe it goes all the way to this number 2. Our access, as you can tell, is right here. So it's paved and improved, all that we need, presumably all that the folks south of us need, and all that the folks that are to our west needed. The other protester is who owns what is shown here as R1. This is an area that has been in change and in transition over the last decade or so. It is trending in an industrial-type manner. If you had the opportunity to drive it, you would see numerous office warehouses, metal buildings. These buildings right here to our west, they're actually zoned straight I-2, and they are metal buildings. So I believe one of the comments made in the letter of protest from the R1 folks was the incompatible nature of the industrial use. So it's worth noting that their R1 is already surrounded by I-2 uses, and again, it's already surrounded by the P.U.D. 1653 that does nothing but, again, this does nothing but add the 1 use. We do back up on our east to the railroad tracks. It was asked in our meeting with one of the commissioners where the sewer was, so Mr. Johnson will get into the details of this, but there is no sewer in the area, so the eastern part of this site would be very challenging to sewer. We'd have to bore under the railroad tracks, potentially under 63rd Street. I believe the cost estimate to be able to sewer the whole site was around $300,000. It's just not economically feasible. So the personal storage use is something that is suitable for this site. Again, it backs up to the railroad, so we think it's a compatible use, not only with its immediate surroundings, but also with the general nature of this area. There is one TE that we agree with, and with that, I'm going to turn it over briefly to Mr. Elliott, and then Mr. Johnson, if you have any questions, and then I'll be back to wrap it up and answer any questions you might have.
Dave, before you go, the streets 65th and 64th, there's a separate application with respect to those that will be coming up to vacate those two?
Not 64th.
Not, excuse me, not 64th.
Yes.
65th.
65th, just the portion that, you know, is within our site.
Within your site.
We will, and we have met with staff on that. We don't foresee any issues. Again, it's never been improved. It dead-ends. Once a railway went through there, it killed the viability of that street, so we don't anticipate any issues with the closing and ultimately the vacation of that. But you will see that closing application.
64th will remain?
As is. It's open, publicly open right-of-way.
All right, thanks. State your name, please, sir.
Rand Elliott. I live at 425 Northwest 15th Street.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. We have some images, do we not? Oh, they're handed out. Okay, very good. Well, first off, I'd like to say, as an architect, I'm excited about the opportunity to do a personal storage complex. And it may seem like an odd thing, but this is the type of project that needs reinventing. So often, projects that are built these days are suitable for creating income and so forth, but they're not contributing to the quality of the environment or to the architectural atmosphere that we have in a community, and this is an opportunity to do that. Mr. Willby and Mr. Ridley, we're fortunate to have them and their interest in reinventing what personal storage is really all about. So I'm going to take you through some drawings that hopefully will illustrate that point. The first drawing is actually showing a view looking to the east. The corner building is on the left. The multi-story building is on the right. 63rd would be to your right out of the picture. The idea with this is to use the module of the storage unit itself to create a business office where you would come and conduct business. You would buy boxes. You would do any of those kinds of things. It also has a sign on the top of it that's integrated with the building to create a sense of visibility and identification. The concept and idea with this project is called contents, and rather than just calling it "use storage" or "put your stuff here" or whatever the case might be, the goal here is to really raise the expectation and the level of quality and perception about what this sort of storage facility can be. You're going to see how that works in a moment. The photograph that you see here is actually the sign that was deleted. It was the one proposed on the 63rd Street sign. I don't know that that's in the drawings. Let's see if it is. I don't think that's there. Okay, this is the drawing that we're referring to at this moment. Gives you an idea about the size of it. It's modest in scale. One of the things that's the advantage of having the office here, and it's the same size as one of the storage units, is it allows them to discuss with a potential customer how big a storage unit is, how you might ideally begin to use it or fill it, and so that would be indicated on the floors, the walls, and the ceiling, so it's exactly the same size as a storage unit. So as a businessperson, they're here to help you meet your needs. The next image? Okay, the only two they have. Thank you. We'll skip over to, and this is actually a view from the north side looking to the south, and there are a couple of things that we believe are important to change the whole perception about what storage is, and we believe that it relates to the quality of the details that the building includes, to show that it's not just a hastily constructed storage building like most of the things that are out there. You'll also notice on this particular drawing, you're looking through a drive aisle. On the right, we're proposing to have vegetation growing on the backs of the building so that there's a softening effect, if you will, and a landscape element there. We're also proposing, if you'll notice, the poles and the horizontals and the verticals. One of the things that happens in projects like this is that drainage is always an important piece of the puzzle, and we're proposing to do a customized drain, both downsout and gutter, so that this doesn't feel like a traditional and typical storage building. You'll also notice the quality graphics above each doorway. There's nothing worse than going into a facility like this and not being able to remember or find the location where your unit is. The next image is literally facing the west, and you're going around the corner. Since this drawing was done, we originally started with the idea of having vegetation cover the fencing. Now it's going to be site-proof fencing, so that's not accurate at this particular moment. But again, you have a sense of the detail. The metal architectural panels would be detailed in such a way that they're not a metal barn or any of that kind of thing that has the sensibilities of really beautiful architectural details. You can see the graphics and the landscaping as well. The next image, which is really where the project comes together, is that the concept called contents is really intended to create a unique opportunity to define this particular project and what is done here. And so the concept called contents is really illustrated in the night versions. Each one of the buildings has a different geometric form on it, and that geometric form indicates or suggests the contents inside of the individual storage spaces. And so each one of the graphics is different, and it suggests that each one of us who might rent one of these facilities would have different kinds of materials stored in it, whether it's a bicycle or games or whatever it might be. And so it illustrates that. So you actually have the opportunity to show that this is a unique facility. They care and are concerned, and the quality of the details is really important in their approach to conducting business. The last image shows the, really, quality lighting down through the drive areas, and you also see two of the graphic elements. You'll notice on the right that there's a letter "I" that is near the graphic, and that shows that it's building "I," and then as you drive that loop, you actually see the numbers on the individual units themselves. So we've literally tried to identify all of those things that make this process and this building form challenging, and we've tried to solve every single one of those. And we think that it's an admirable approach to have clients willing and interested to reinvent a particular kind of project that generally is not seen as a contributing kind of project. Thank you. Happy to have questions.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Rand? Mr. Elliott?
The small letters, are they going to go maybe inside the geometric shapes?
I'm sorry?
The building letters?
They typically are outside of the...
Okay. I was just looking at the illustration. They look strange being right next to the shapes.
Sure. Other question?
I think that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Briefly, I want to mention just a couple of things about the screening. And Rand mentioned it. So what we are proposing here and requiring the S.P.U.D. is that it be that live screening wall. So on the other side of the trees will be the fence with the vegetation that will grow up. The screening that we're proposing here along this and here would actually be the building itself. So rather than having a fence, a dead space, and then the building to where trash and vegetation could grow up and become a maintenance problem, we're going to actually build the actual building right up against the property line so that that serves as the screening, and then here you'll have a site-proof screening fence along here, here, and here. So again...
So your site-proof goes to the R1 property to the north only. The other will be the vegetative screening that we've talked, that's been discussed, that Mr. Elliott pointed out for you, right?
That's right.
Okay.
So again, there is one TE we agree with. The TE does reference the two proposed roof-mounted signs. There is now just one, since we eliminated this finger piece down here. It's just that one that's shown on the office building, but we do agree to that limitation proposed within the technical evaluation. So with that, staff does recommend approval. We'd ask for same and be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
I don't have any questions for him. I would like to hear from staff about 64th and 65th.
Okay. Now, or you?
At some point.
At some point. Okay. Kelly, you want to come up?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Kelly Work, and I am an attorney representing the owners of the property that is the undeveloped tract that is immediately south of the subject property on the south side of 64th Street. My address is 105 North Hudson Suite 304. I do have a handout that I'd like to provide to you, and I'll refer to it in my comments. I'm here today representing the several groups that are related and share the ownership of this particular tract, and then they also own the parcel that is on the southwest corner of 64th and Chartel. And if you could, Cindy, could you put up the area map that shows the larger area, please? Those persons who I represent are the Barry Family Investments LLC, the John R. McKee Trust, Linda Harris, Monument Hill Investments LLC, and the principal of that LLC is Hank Bradley, and then Brennan Dolan serves as the property manager for that group, and Brennan is also here today representing them. The, as I mentioned, so our parcel there is, you see 60, Northwest 63rd Street on the southern boundary there, and then the railroad tracks are that blank space to the east there. And so we own the property that is fronting on Northwest 63rd Street, extending there through to 64th Street, and then also, as I mentioned, the parcel that is at the south that is on the west side of Chartel at the southwest corner of 64th and Chartel. We are opposed to this rezoning request to allow personal storage as a permitted use at this location, and we ask that you deny the S.P.U.D. as it is presently presented. To allow metal storage buildings with chain leak fencing as proposed will be detrimental to this area and will have an adverse impact on our client's properties and on the area generally. I do want to make reference to a couple of things that are included in your staff report that are in error and need to be corrected. And the first of those is that at the beginning of the staff report, it references that this property is being rezoned from the I-2 Industrial District and O2. Well, there's none of this property that is included as a part of this application is zoned I-2 Industrial. So if anyone has the impression that this is a down-zoning from I-2, that is incorrect. That is an error in the report and needs to be corrected. Then the other correction that needs to be made is that that piece that is there on the southernmost piece that is still showing to be a part of the application is not a part of the application, and that also has not been the map. The change has not been made to the map. Although it was submitted, we understand about Wednesday last week, that requested change, but, so that is in error. The map needs to be corrected to show that that piece is not included. That piece that's on the south side of 64th Street there, just east of the property that my clients own, that correction also needs to be made so that there's not confusion. We're concerned that if this were to be recommended for approval with the staff report having those errors in it, that there may be some confusion about what exactly was being approved. The personal storage use is not a permitted use on this property currently. It is, the property is, as referenced, zoned partially O2, the subject property that is, and then also parts of it are within P.U.D. 1653. And P.U.D. 1653 includes other parcels that extend on to the north there as you go north, even north of 66th Street. And that is essentially an O2-based P.U.D. with some modifications as well. So the existing zoning allows principally O2-type uses, and that is what had been contemplated for this area. That P.U.D. 1653 was only approved approximately nine months ago. So it was December of 2017 that that was, that went through the process, was recommended for approval by the commission, and then approved by the city council and... for approval by the commission, and then approved by the city council in December of 2017. Now, as you all are aware, I want, I want to talk about the status of the existing streets there. Of course, as you all know, Northwest 63rd Street there on our south boundary is a major thoroughfare, four lanes of traffic, and is an arterial street, and is developed, of course, with mixed-use office and commercial uses. The Northwest 64th Street, when you're west of Chertel, is approved to city standards. So, west of Chertel, it has been improved to city standards. 64th Street east of Chertel does have some asphalt paving not to city standards that extends about halfway from Chertel going to the east. And then Northwest 65th Street on the north end there, adjacent to the subject property, is not open and is unimproved. Northwest 60 feet, 5th Street west of Chertel is improved to city standards. So, these streets are, the right-of-way is there as you extend north from 64th Street. It was platted as part of Burton's subdivision plat, but unfortunately, those, the public improvements of those streets did not occur. So, the property was platted, subdivided, subdivided into lots. The streets are laid out and dedicated to the city, but those improvements have not occurred. What I handed out to you was that under the PUD 1653, the one that was just approved last December, it does contemplate that those properties would be taking access from these existing public streets, which therefore would necessitate their being improved to city standards. So, as recently as December, the plan was that these streets were going to be improved, and that this proposed office development that was contemplated under PUD 1653 would be taking place. So, if you, what is now being proposed with this SPOD is to remove that requirement and to eliminate the possibility that there would be improvement to city standards for Northwest 64th Street and Northwest 65th Street. And our suggestion to the commission is that that constitutes a regression. That is not a step forward from what was originally, what had been planned and approved by the planning commission and city council previously. It is a retreat and would not be advantageous for this area to allow this property, I mean, to allow this property, say, "Well, then let's just let it become personal storage because we don't have the streets improved to city standards," is a step back in our view, and it is not consistent with how this area is developing and what the trend has been over the last 10 to 15 years. And we have a very vibrant commercial and mixed-use and office area along 63rd Street, extending along Classen to the west as you go north, and the same potential is there has been, as has been seen and as was recognized when PUD 1653 was presented. It has tremendous potential for that kind of development to occur, and if we're going to resort to turning it into warehouse or storage use, it's going to impede that kind of mixed-use and commercial development that otherwise we believe is possible. One of the things that I just wanted to mention is that, you know, when this, when this notice goes out to the surrounding property owners, the way it was identified in the SPOD, it identifies this as a development that's going to be controlled by the O-, by the O-2 Use and Development Regulations with modifications, and then the modifications are not specified in the notice. Well, this, what is actually being proposed here is, you know, personal storage buildings, which are not permitted in O-2, of course. The first district where personal storage uses are permitted is as a conditional use in C-3, if to meet certain conditions in order for it to be eligible even in C-3. The first district where it is a permitted use is C-4. So, I just mentioned that in passing. That's a little bit misleading to, for the notice to go out and suggest that this is an SPOD that will be governed by the O-2 regulations when what is actually being proposed has very little relationship to the O-2 district and certainly is not considered to be an office development. In our view, we're not certain why the applicant suddenly, from our perspective, made the determination that negotiations were over and they were proceeding forward to the hearing, but in our view, the, this SPOD as proposed has not been thoroughly sussed out. There's protest, other protests from the property owner to the north, who I think you'll hear from as well. And also, Mr. Box made reference to a number of proposed revisions that they have mentioned regarding specific landscaping and regarding building setbacks along Northwest 64th Street. Well, we received a document late yesterday afternoon that included some proposed changes to the SPOD that addressed some, not completely, but some of the issue with respect to landscaping and building setbacks. But that document has not even been submitted to the city. It has not been reviewed by the staff. It's not before you today. The only design statement that you have before you today does not have any specifics with respect to landscaping, and it also does not have this provision calling for a 15-foot building setback that Mr. Box made reference to. So, that hasn't, that's not before you today. The only document that's before you today does not include those proposed restrictions that have not yet been submitted for consideration. We only received a revised document, as I mentioned, late yesterday afternoon. So, if the applicant is pressing for a decision today, we urge you to recommend denial. We are happy to continue to have discussions with them. They are, have indicated by this action today that they're not willing to do that, but we're open to it if they are. But if they're insistent on proceeding forward today, we want to make sure you all understand what the document is, that you're acting on. It's not, it does not include the suggested revisions that were mentioned, and that needs to be clear. And we ask if they insist on action today that you recommend it for denial, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
I actually do, it's not a question. I do think it's a fair comment that the notice went out as an O-2, because it's definitely not O-2. And I agree with that, and I think we just have to be better on making sure those notices contain good information. So, thanks for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners, from Mr. Work? I had a couple, Kelly, if you want to come back up, I'm sorry. With respect to any of these changes and revisions that you mentioned that you received last night, did that, any of those address any of the points that your clients had raised previously, or did they solve anything? Let me ask you this, did it help anything along as far as your clients are concerned?
It was some progress. It was not sufficient in our view. We had been asking for some specific restrictions with respect to minimum building setback along 64th Street, and also with respect to specific provisions for landscaping. And yes, there was, we did receive a revised, proposed revised document that, that did have a change with respect to building setback and had a change with respect to landscaping, but they were inadequate in our view.
So, the setback, let's take those one at a time. The landscape, landscaping's hard to describe, but what specifically on the setback?
We had requested that they provide for a minimum of 15-foot building setback along the Northwest 64th Street frontage, and...
From the property line?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
Okay.
And then that, within that setback, that they provide a 10-foot landscaped area that would provide some screening, because what, essentially what they're proposing is just a chain leak fence. There's not going to be any screening otherwise of the, of the proposed storage buildings. So, we wanted to have some landscaping that was going to actually provide some buffering from what they were proposing, and what, what the commentary, the comment or suggested revision that was submitted to us last night, which again is not before you today in the document because it has not been submitted to the staff, provided for, that they would plant two-inch diameter trees on 40-foot centers, and we just don't think that's adequate.
So, you wanted a 15-foot setback as well as a landscape buffer along 64th, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Did I, I just want to understand what the deltas are here, right? The bid and the ask, if you will?
Yeah.
So, that I get a view of about what, where you are and where they are.
Those are two, what I would say are minor issues that, that we are concerned about. But yeah, we did make those requests.
All right. And then generally, the use, regardless of what the notice said, et cetera, clearly your clients are sophisticated people. They are sophisticated enough to hire counsel, et cetera. So, they're, they've come and they've gotten good advice on this. With regard to the use, you understand now what they are. Is, are you object, is your clients, are your clients objecting specifically to this use?
Absolutely.
At this property?
Yes, sir.
At this location?
Yes, sir. 100%.
Because of, I mean, I know you gave...
Because it's not an appropriate use for this area. It's going to, it's going to result in adverse impact on the surrounding developable property, including my client's property. I mean, these typically, these multi-storage uses are relegated to tracks that are otherwise unusable or not, that don't have the potential for commercial or office or residential or other kind of productive development. And in our view, this parcel very much does have that, as was reflected in the PUD that was approved just last December. And so, we're not sure why they are now resorting to this essentially warehouse-type use and abandoning the idea of doing the improvements to the public streets.
I, actually, so this gets to a point that I was wanting to make today. I, I agree, I think self-storage is a bummer, no matter where you put it. I don't think there's necessarily a great place for it. However, in this situation, my understanding is, in order to bring infrastructure to the site, there are significant costs. And while normally I wouldn't consider that in a zoning case, you know, being involved somewhat in the business myself, like, I understand that that's a deal killer. And so, the question, I think it's worth considering, the question of like, how developable really is this land for anything above, you know, necessarily what the use is? I mean, it's like parking lot, it's self-storage, it's things that won't require the typical infrastructure for, you know, a higher and better use. So, that's, that's my concern.
Excuse me. We have a, you know, we have a several-story office building there immediately to the west, that is on the east side of Chertel, so...
It might be good to hear from Tim Johnson on this specific issue, because that's one of the things that we...
Wait, I can't, I can't let that one go. Just, but Kelly, that off, that several-story office building is on 60, on the corner of 63rd and Chertel, is it not?
It is correct.
I mean, so 63rd is a four-lane arterial. Your client, it, on the south end, has access or frontage on to 63rd at that location at just east of there. So, I, I mean, I don't know that the, this parcel that is non-arterial hard up against the track is comparable to that parcel that is frontage, frontages on to a major, a major arterial in that area, as well as Chertel is fairly well-developed in that area also.
Well, so, I guess the point I would make is the services are there. They're available. You know, if you got, if you're able to build a several-story office building on the corner of 63rd and Chertel, then that's not that far from 64th and Chertel.
Well, I'd love to hear from the applicants on the difficulties that I was made to understand about the site.
Tim Johnson, Johnson Associates. So, Mr. Work is correct. This office building is served off of a sewer that runs on Chertel and goes to right about where our front door is going to be for our office. Reason why it stops there is because this is the ridge line. It, beyond that point, it drops significantly towards the railroad tracks, and the sewer is only about five feet deep right here. So, it's just deep enough to serve this office building that's also up on the hill. It serves this warehouse, serves this warehouse, and will serve our office building and restrooms, but the rest of our track doesn't need to have sewer. To bring sewer to serve this site, this red line really needs to go to a point down south of 63rd with all the development of Chesapeake. Chesapeake was required to, by the city, to bring a new sewer line up to serve any new offices on that side of the ridge, because the sewer line on the other side of the ridge was at capacity. So, Chesapeake did that. They brought it up to a point right here, and we tied this little leg into that newer line. When I spoke with staff about these tracks that David rezoned nine months ago, they said, "You have to come from here north under the railroad tracks and bring it up into here." And we did a cost estimate up to this point, and it's about $300,000 to get there. And I know money doesn't mean anything here, but, and I think Mr. Work's client, his property is fairly level across 63rd Street, but they would have a difficult time gravity draining to here. If that ends up being a single user, they could petition the city to ask if they could pump into that other line so that they don't have to spend $300,000 going under the railroad tracks. Thanks for your question.
Commissioners, any other questions from Mr. Work or for, I have another protester signed up, Dave, if you'd like to, let's, let's hear from Mr. Castle, David Castle. Could you come forward, please, sir?
My name is David Castle. I live at 920 Southwest 38th Street and more, and I'm speaking today on behalf of my wife. I submitted a written statement to you all. I hope you've seen it. It gives the legal description. I'm the T-shaped piece directly to the north. Right off the bat, I would like to address the documents that were added I did not know about till this morning, about an hour before I got here. Mr. Box has my contact information. That protest that I filed has my address, my phone number, my email address. Mr. Johnson has my contact information. So, if they're trying to appease my protest, I would have appreciated maybe seeing it before I walked in the door. So, that is all, in my opinion, a gross negligence on their behalf. Mr. Box mentioned that they've reached out to us multiple times. I have been contacted exactly once by Mr. Johnson. Never heard another word. They never said anything about any of these changes to help me understand that it was going on, and in my opinion, it's negligent as well. Some of the issues in addition to what Mr. Work's brought up, Mr. Box mentioned that this area was progressing to an industrial situation. If it is, I agree with Mr. Work's. Why did we rezon this checkerboard O-2 in December? I did not get notice of that to be in the meeting with you. I did go to the city council, and I protested that. From a landowner, we got approximately two acres right in the center of a 10-acre track between Chertel and railroad tracks north of 64th. It's a significant part of that, and when that went through, the O-2 went through on PUD 1653, in my opinion, that's the most confusing thing I've ever seen in my life. One of the first lessons I ever learned in dealing in real estate is never obfuscate any sort of deal. You look at this right now, it's O-2, it's industrial. They mentioned that I'm surrounded by O-2. That's not correct. There's one... There's one northeast of me, doesn't touch my property. There's one northwest that the corners meet. Then there's R1 on both sides. It's a checkerboard. So, my point is, if I try to market my land, what's my market? I didn't agree with 1653, but since it passed, I was assured by Mr. Farhar who presented that to you that he was planning an office development. It would be very nice. It would complement the area and it would add value to my property. I couldn't see and I expressed this to them, how in the world are you going to do an office complex when you don't have any land that's contiguous? This is the largest piece of contiguous land in that whole 1653. But I got beat on that. I'm a big boy. I can take my lumps. But this is off the rails. You're further obfuscating our property. So, now we've got warehouse. This is not O2 in any way, shape, or form. Some of the things I mentioned in my protest, even though they've added some screening and gone to plant vines on the fence, due to the elevation of our property, it's above theirs. If we develop as an office complex on two different sides of the property, we will see mini-storage, period. And I agree with you. I think it's a bummer. I don't want my office overlooking a mini-storage. Reminds me of Sarah Palin's joke about putting lipstick on a pig. It's a storage facility. That's all it is and all it's ever going to be. In addition to that, I would really request that this be denied if for no other reason than to give me some sort of consistency. Before 1653, I was here once before in reference to this same piece of property when Chesapeake was trying to do some stuff. And they abandoned the project, but it was considered to be transitional. I forget which one of the counselors, actually it's mine and Moore too, that mentioned, this is a transitional area. At that point in time, it could go industrial, it could go light office. My opinion, it could go residential with oil at $80 a barrel, housing complex within walking distance to Chesapeake. That's not off the table. But now, what is my market? Particularly if this passes. I've got checkerboard O2, we've got checkerboard residential, the corners are industrial. You're limiting my market to somebody who wants to overlook a mini-storage and not have any clue what's going to happen on any adjacent property. That's so inconsistent, it does not provide any consistency that we can see. In addition to that, all these references to not wanting to, anyone to see the backs of the units, not wanting anyone to see the dumpsters, even with this new document, which I haven't seen, I'll have to take a look at that and try to figure out if it meets any of my criteria. If they felt that it was necessary to screen that from the street, on two sides of my property, I get to see it full-on. And with the difference in elevation, I looked at two topographical maps. One said to the apex on my wife's property from 64th Street was approximately 18 feet. One said 14. And I never could reconcile that. I didn't have time to like do a survey. But if you build up a pad and put any kind of office complex there, an eight-foot chain link fence with vines is not going to do anything. So, I would respectfully request that you deny this application. This is not O2 and it's just, it's obfuscating my land. It's making it so confusing. I don't have a clue who I would market to at this point if this passes. It's not industrial because I got O2 scattered all around me from 1653. So, if I tell somebody, "Well, you can go industrial, it's next to a mini-storage." Then if Mr. Farhar shows up and says, "On 1653, we got all this zoned O2," I have no market. This is so inconsistent and so random, it is affecting the value of the property, in my opinion, significantly. I thank you for your time.
Commissioners, any question for Mr. Castle?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Box?
Yeah, if I could briefly. As is often the case with areas that are in transition, the zoning as currently exists today is a hodgepodge. Mr. Castle's property is here. He is abutting straight I2 to his west. Again, straight I2 that fronts on Chertel just south of that, that are developed with metal buildings. 1653 covers a wide area. I mean, it covers much, the screen you see before you, it was on both sides of Chertel and it covered a broad area. It was mostly R1 and the reason we did that back then was a recognition that R1 is not, frankly, appropriate at this time and R1 is not likely to ever be developed moving forward in this area. So, I want to address a few points made by Mr. Work. He started out with section 9.7 of the PUD that's in place now, again, that's 1653, as some form of an acknowledgement that Mr. Farhar back then committed to extending 64th Street. So, if you read the provision in its entirety, it says, "The subject PUD will take access via the numerous public streets existing in the area at the time of this PUD. Specific location of access points shall be determined at the specific plan stage." So, again, if we look at the map and see all the various pieces of property that are subject to 1653, the reason that we drafted it like that was because we didn't know exactly what the access would look like, where it would be accessed, but perhaps we looked to the word "existing." 64th Street is not existing. There was never a belief that this provision would force the developer to start extending every public street. It was as simple as we didn't know. There could have been a consolidation of properties in which you wouldn't need access from a certain street, similar to what we have here. So, there was never an indication in that 64th Street based upon 9.7 was going to have to be extended by whoever developed on the north side of that. Mr. Work said that metal buildings will be detrimental. It's important to note that this building right here on the corner of Chertel and 64th is a metal building. I believe it's painted blue. The building north of that is also a metal building. Again, the trend in this area has been too light industrial. There's a lot of metal buildings in this area. So, it's not out of character. I would submit that the metal buildings proposed here will perhaps be the nicest, most attractive metal buildings that you would see in this area. In terms of why we're, in their terms, rushing to get to the planning commission, I don't think we are rushing. Again, the planning commission hearing has been set two previous times and it was continued both times. There is a contract to purchase this property. My client has certain deadlines. And when it became clear to us that we are really talking about one issue that both sides are on complete opposite ends of the spectrum on, it didn't make sense to go continue to spend time and attorney fees talking about the same issue where we both know where our respective clients stand. In terms of what he told you when pressed on what his specific asks are, we agree to both of those. So, the changes in the document that keep getting referenced, it's limited to just those two things. It's a 15-foot building limit line and it's a landscape buffer with specifics about the centers on which the trees have to be planted. Now, the PUD, the S.PUD as submitted says five. We can change that to 10. We can handle that simply through a TE as you guys do every other Thursday here. So, when pressed, there were two specific requests, both of which we agreed to.
Okay, now, the five to 10, go over that again? I'm sorry, I missed that.
As drafted, in the document that we gave to Mr. Work, in paragraph six on page three, it says that there shall be, within the 15-foot setback from Northwest 64th Street, there should be a minimum landscape buffer of five feet with medium two-inch caliper trees planted on 40-foot centers pursuant to City of Oklahoma City landscaping ordinance. So, what we propose to do is consistent with what I've already told the commission, change that to 10 feet rather than five feet. So, you have the 15-foot building limit line, which is what they've asked for. Within that 15 feet, we will have a 10-foot landscape buffer, which is what they asked for, with specifics on the caliber of tree and the spacing of the trees along the entirety of that Northwest 64th right-of-way. And that is why I don't see any benefit to continue this. When pressed on specifics, we have agreed to what their concerns are. We simply are not going to agree to extend 64th Street. It doesn't benefit us. It doesn't serve us. It's unnecessary.
So, they just circulated the S.P.D. 1076. So, paragraph six landscaping, what you're proposing to amend is the sentence that reads, "Within the 15-foot setback from Northwest 64th Street, there shall be a minimum landscape buffer of 10 feet."
Yes.
And then additionally, would that require any alteration to the setback or?
No, setback is already handled in paragraph four under front. It's the 15 feet. And so, then again, in paragraph six, we specifically say, we reference the 15-foot setback from Northwest 64th Street.
Okay.
Do you have anything else right now?
No.
Mr. Castle, would you like to come back for a moment?
Mr. Box just said that he had met our requirements. I've not seen it. I've not agreed to that. I don't think that a 12-foot chain link fence with a vine is going to be a barrier. And that's just an absolute false statement that he's met my requirements. I have not seen that document.
Well-
How we can vote on that right now is beyond me. I have never seen what he's saying fixed my problem.
Just the, where's your screening in relation, what's your screening in relation to Mr. Castle's property, David? If I could, just one more time.
So, along this side, it will be the building, the structure itself. Here, you'll have a site-proof fence, so we're not proposing to do the chain link.
Right.
It would be a site-proof fence consistent with what you typically approve in PUDs.
Right.
Same goes here. The only chain link, the live fence is along-
Along the front.
-64th Street right-of-way. So, you'll have traditional site-proof screening here, the building serving as a site-proof screening there.
That's not acceptable. That's not screening. That's what I don't want to see is a mini-storage. That's not a screen. That's the problem.
So, in fairness, that, there were lines drawn in the sand and he told us that was absolutely not acceptable. And so, we understood what his position was. There wasn't a need to continue to go back and hear him tell us again that it's not acceptable. We weren't trying to slight him. He drew the line in the sand and we understood.
Okay.
We, all we could do is design in how we believed it would best suit-
So, there's no additional landscaping along that piece of property?
Well, there is. I mean, you're going to have landscaping on this north line and there's landscaping called out there. But it's a site-proof fence rather than the chain link live.
All right, understood that where the lines are drawn here. All right.
Chairman, could I just briefly address Mr. Box's suggested revisions?
Just one second. Are you done, David? You got anything else? Because I'm going to wrap this up pretty quick. Since Kelly's-
I did not agree with you.
I understand, Mr. Castle, your objections are noted. Thank you, sir. Kelly, you want to go ahead?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to address these suggested revisions just so that it's clear what is being proposed. I mean, Mr. Box just made reference to, oh, the issue with respect to the setback is resolved. Well, not as far as we're concerned. They, you know, they, this language that they proposed yesterday does provide an exception. They have an exception to the 15-foot building setback for their office building there, which is at the west end. That's just not been referenced in his comments. So, we were asking for a 15-foot building setback along the entire Northwest 64th Street south boundary. And then also the document, the thing, this is the document that has, that was provided us yesterday. It's internally inconsistent because they have, I guess, in their haste, they added some language that said, "Okay, well, we'll do a specific landscape buffer." It says of five feet and then it addresses two-inch caliper trees. But then just in the language in paragraph five, it says, they said, "They shall not be required to provide a landscape buffer adjacent to residential zoning." Well, our piece of property on the, along the 64th Street just happens to be residentially-zoned property. So, they've taken it away in paragraph five, what they're providing in paragraph six. So, it's, there's some internal inconsistencies with the document. And also, we would suggest, as I mentioned earlier, that this proposal that it's going to be an adequate landscape buffer to do a two-inch caliper tree on 40-foot centers, that's pretty minimal and not, in our view, adequate. We would suggest something more like four-inch caliper trees separated on maybe 15 or 20-foot centers. Thank you.
All right.
May I clarify the one point on the 64th Street?
Yes.
So, we do allow zero setback on 64th, but it's limited to the office. So, Mr. Work's clients own here. The limit of our non-setback is the office, significant distance away from Mr. Work's clients.
Okay.
And perhaps there was an error. We believed, I guess, when it was drafted, that Mr. Work's client's entire property is zoned I1. I guess that little northern sliver is zoned R1. So, we can modify it to mean to the north.
Well, it also specifically says, however, if developed as personal storage.
Right.
Storage buildings.
So, we absolutely-
It's a condition statement.
Require the setback and the buffer along the entire 64th Street right-of-way, save the office.
Scott?
Can we hear from traffic on that, the issue 64th and 65th right quick?
Please.
What's the question?
Are there any plans, have there ever been any plans to extend 64th or 65th?
Not that I'm aware of.
Is there any concern from your standpoint or from staff's standpoint about the inability to extend 64th or 65th?
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you very much.
Commissioners, any additional comments?
We looked at this in December. My recollection from that discussion was there was a lot of discussion about this area in general. This area meaning essentially everything north of 63rd and west from Broadway Extension. That whole area is really a hodgepodge of uses. It just is. And there was a real recognition in that discussion that residential was probably not the predominant use unit going forward. I was sympathetic to the comments about O2 being the basis for the notice. I understand the confusion there. I would say to that, if you get a notice and you're a member of the public, you should dig into that. You should call. You should ask staff for the information they have. That's really why the notice is sent. But I don't see that this is a big step away. This is land that on the east side abuts a railroad. It's tucked in behind an office building at a dead-end street. Personal storage is not a bummer to me. It's a necessary need. People use it. People want it. There's demand for it. That's why it gets built. It is what it is. So, I'm not persuaded that this is some big step from where we've brought this nine months ago to today.
I guess to qualify my bummer comment, while I do stand by that personal storage is a bummer, at the same time, I think this area, like, I agree, it's not that far off. I don't have a good, I don't have, you know, a good feel either way on what to vote on this one. I am really going to leave it up, I think, for the most part, to the wisdom of my fellow commissioners. I was sympathetic with Mr. Castle, but I guess that's my comment. Guess that's where I'm going to leave off.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. Generally, I think, I agree that this area, with Scott's statement about this, we've had several applications since I've been on the planning commission for a lot of uses, varying from some of the Chesapeake applications to other developers in this area. I can honestly say, I don't recall an application that would have been any sort of residential use in this area in the 14 years that I know of that I've been on this commission. And there have been several in this area. I think it's trending in the way that you've indicated. On this personal storage use, you know, that we had, in my particular neighborhood, we had one built right abutting our park in the neighborhood. And I objected to it. Wasn't anything I could do about it. It was, it was there. As it turns out, it's not the most beautiful use, but it is one of the more unobtrusive uses that I've ever seen. There's very little traffic. There's very little noise. There's very little, I mean, I wish they were this- I wish they were this pretty. I remarked earlier that my storage unit is not this nice, but any rate, I don't think anybody will ever get particularly happy or jump up and down for joy to have a storage unit in their, in their backyard or in their, near their property. But I do think, looking at this area and this particular, these particular tracts of land, hard up against the railroad street on undeveloped streets, I can anticipate, with no plans to develop that we know of, I can anticipate that these are ever going to move in a direction, and especially considering they're not served by services. Another big barrier to anything, any significant development, I'm kinda inclined to agree with the applicant and Scott on that particular point. I just don't, I just don't know how that works later on. So let's get a motion on this, one way or the other, unless anybody else has, is there anybody else that would like to speak to us on this matter that has not signed up but is here to talk to us? All right.
I will make a motion to recommend approval to city council on S-PUD 1076, subject to the TEs and adding a TE2, which would amend the master design statement, paragraph number six, altering the landscape buffing requirement from five feet to 10 feet.
And was that, that was all the additions that we made, I believe? Is that right?
I was the only one specifically...
Also add the 15-foot from 64th Street. It wasn't in what was presented to you?
Cover the, for the office.
The R1 confusion thing?
The 15-foot from 64th Street. Right.
Where it's R1 there on 64th.
Right.
Well, if 64th were to be extended, I guess.
Yes.
I guess I was confused, cause it says within the 15-foot setback, so we need to add the 15-foot setback as an addition.
Correct.
So that needs to, does that need to be a separate TE, in your view?
I don't think so.
Requiring a 15-foot setback from the front to amend paragraph four?
That's what we would recommend, yes, sir.
I'll take that recommendation.
All right, well, we can make it a separate TE. I don't think it'll, it certainly doesn't hurt.
Okay, so adding TE number two, which would alter the master design statement, paragraph number six, amending the landscape buffer from five feet to 10 feet, and then adding TE number three, which would require a 15-foot front setback in addition to landscape buffer. Are you comfortable with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I have one other request, just to comment briefly with respect, before you vote. We certainly get the drift, but I think it only works to the applicant's advantage if there is confusion about what is exactly being required. And I, you know, I think it's unfortunate that this, we allow this where things get submitted to the opponents, you know, at 5:00 PM the night before, and we're having to respond when that's not been presented to the commission. That puts us at a disadvantage, in my view. However, but I would like for it to be clear about what exactly the applicant is committing to with respect to landscaping. They have, in this document they submitted yesterday, they are saying they're gonna do, it says medium two-inch caliper trees. I think that probably was intended to be a minimum two-inch caliper trees. And we would suggest and request that you both increase that minimum size and also shorten the 40-foot centers to something that's, that will provide more of a real buffer. I mean, 22-inch caliper trees on 40-foot centers in 30 years maybe is gonna provide a buffer, but it's not going to in the next 10. But that's our request.
The reference to medium is straight from the landscape ordinance. I believe they call the two-inch caliper medium, and so we prefer to keep it as is.
So four-inch, four, excuse me, four-inch on 40s?
Yes.
Excuse me, two-inch on 40, two-inch medium trees, as it says in the landscape ordinance, on 40-foot centers. That's the motion.
I'm comfortable with the motion is made. If staff had been uncomfortable with the landscape requirements, I'm guessing they would have put that in our packet, and we weren't, we weren't given any information they were uncomfortable with that.
All right.
So I'm gonna defer to the ordinances and the staff on those issues.
Second.
Motion to approve item 11 as amended, adding TE3. Cast your votes. And that's approved. Thank you all for appearing.
The remaining items on the agenda are continued. That was the last one.
Communications and reports, planning commission committees.
Before you move on from planning commission committees, I would like to clarify who is going to serve on the development code update planning commission committee. We have not revisited that in a while, and I remember it was Janice and Asa. I don't remember if Mike, Mike is a yes. Is that all? Okay, just wanted to confirm. Thank you, we will have a committee.
Does anybody else want to join? Yeah, more than Mary or...
I can tap out.
No chance. And, planning commission members. We actually have a new planning commission member. Matt Hinkle has been named by the city council and will be joining us at our next meeting, as I understand. Stand up and take a bow. We're glad to have you.
You know, next meeting, you sit up here, not there.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we will not continue like every case on the docket. And I'm not sure, I'm not sure you got a full taste of what you've let yourself in for, but we're glad you have, so we're looking forward to having you. Planning department?
Yes, I wanted to mention that we have new CIP books. I think Sarah might have them for you to replace the ones that you received in the study session, because the MAPS office has been updated in this book. It wasn't in the previous version, so now it includes a chapter for the MAPS projects. And I wanted to just explain too, in the process that the planning commission reviews the CIP is to be consistent with the comprehensive plan, and the MAPS projects have already been reviewed under the current comprehensive plan in the previous CIP, and they haven't changed. So we're gonna go ahead and docket this. You'll see it on the next council, or the next planning commission agenda for a recommendation to council next time. If you do look at that chapter on MAPS and have any questions, I'm sure I can find answers for you from the MAPS office. And then the other thing I wanted to let you know about is we have a new staff member, and her name is Marilyn Lammensdorf. And Marilyn and Sarah are the new comp plan review, performance review team. Marilyn has replaced Kelly Driscoll in her previous position, and she comes from Austin. So we're happy to have her here and wanted you to make her acquaintance and put a face with a name.
Welcome aboard.
Are you saying that Kelly has a new position?
Kelly moved into a new position. It was a, moving into the plan development and implementation division, but she still assists and she still kinda keeps up with everything.
Still around?
Yeah.
Development services, amiable counselor, no. Citizens to be heard. Is there anybody left? No, I think we've gotten rid of everyone. Other business adjournment, I'll take a motion. Motion second to adjourn. Okay, we're adjourned.